...meeting of the Village of Oxford Planning Commission. And if you all would join me in playing respect to the flag by stating the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Village Manager, I'm assuming you're going to be our secretary this evening?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for filling in for our regular secretary. If you would kindly conduct the roll call thing.
Jack Curtis.
Here.
Gary Digg, Dirk Gary Douglas.
Here.
Maureen Helmut is excused, Adam Johnson.
Here.
Bonnie Staley is excused.
Good.
Do you need a motion to excuse those members?
Yes, sir, I do. If I would have one, I'd be happy to hear it.
Okay, I'll move to excuse Commissioner Maureen Helmut and Commissioner Bonnie Staley from this evening's meeting.
Second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Good, motion carries. Thank you very much for that. I would now entertain a motion for approval of the agenda for this evening. I want to make note that we have one addition under new business. Item D is now added. We're going to interview Rose Bama, resident of Oxford Village, for the candidacy in the public, or in the Planning Commission. So I entertain a motion for approving the agenda as it is now amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended Planning Commission meeting agenda for the Village of Oxford, November 15, 2016.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the agenda for this evening's meeting has been approved, and thank you very much for that. I would now entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from the October 18 meeting of this year. Those minutes have been included in your package. I hope you've all had a chance to review them. I entertain a motion for the approval of those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from October 18, 2016, Village of Oxford Planning Commission.
Second.
Good, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good, that motion carries also. Thank you very much for approving the minutes. I do not have in my package any correspondence that we have received since our last regular meeting, so we will skip.
There was the code report in the management report in the package, right?
Is that considered correspondence?
Yes, reports.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I will forsake reading this into the minutes. I'm assuming that we've all had an opportunity to read it. Is it necessary for me to read that aloud?
No, but I do have a question or comment on one.
Please take it away.
Joe, under the memorandum from the office of Village Manager, item number four, Edison Alley, the vegetation on this project is being monitored. And forgive me, but I forget the gentleman's name. He used to be the fire chief and he lives on...
Dale.
Dale, Dale. I forget. Every time I see him, I call him Dale, and then I forget what he said. I ran into him a couple times now, and he keeps referencing the dead arborvitae's on top of the mounds.
Right.
Are we going to replace those in the spring?
No, we're going to replace them with ones at the south end that are in front of the fence that's now there. We're going to move the live ones and move them...
So the answer to my question is, in the spring will be yes?
No, we're going to...
Okay, because I see him. I see him in public, and I, you know, he asks me every time.
Sure.
So I'd like to tell him.
Sure.
That and the ad hoc Economic Development Committee of the Village Council. What day do they meet?
The next meeting is November 7.
Yeah, it's on Thursday.
The third Thursday?
Third Thursday is usually.
At what time?
One o'clock.
1:00 P.M.
1:00 P.M.
Those are open in public.
Okay.
At the DDA office.
Yeah, and the only reason I ask is it's not called out on there, but I have a conflict in, but we invite them all to...
Your meeting.
Our meeting, correct. Thank you.
Joe, would you be kind enough to add that meeting information on that line item, please?
Yes, I will.
If you don't mind. Any other concerns or regards pertaining to this correspondence?
I'll make a motion to post and sign the correspondence as received, to receive and file.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor of accepting and filing the correspondence as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, good. Correspondence is accepted. All right, regarding presentations this evening, we have a public hearing regarding the outdoor cafe year-round for the Ox Bar and Grill. I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll make a motion to go into public hearing to, for the outdoor cafe year-round, special land use at 7:08.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor of entering public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, good, we are now in public hearing. Now, the first thing I noticed is that it doesn't appear, unless I'm mistaken, that we have a representative from either the Ox or their organization to make a presentation to us in regards to this.
They are expected to be here.
They are expected to be here.
They were contacted earlier this week. I checked again today, just an hour ago, and I sent a text and a voicemail, so I'm...
And they do know we meet at 7:00 o'clock, is that correct?
Yes, they do.
So they will be here.
How do we deal with this?
Well, usually what happens is the applicant would present the project that they're performing, and then if there are any questions from the public...
That's my expectation.
They would be asked of you at that time. They would be in the audience to listen.
That's my expectation.
And when we close the public hearing and go in to review the special land use, you would then answer and address all the questions from the public.
On the other hand, though, public hearing is just to hear, public if they have any questions.
Yes.
And then Chris Norman would present under their business item...
That's correct.
Questions.
That's correct.
The applicant to answer any questions.
I can also summarize the proposal. It is relevant that the applicant's not here, but I don't think they should necessarily taking any comments from the public.
Right.
Well, because I'm in public hearing, do I have any comments from the public that I can, that I can hear at this point? Because if not, I'm going to close public hearing, and we'll just have to defer this to another time. Because I can't hold a meeting. Mr. President?
Well...
Thank you very much.
My comment was just that when somebody requests something, and this is just my opinion, when somebody requests something and they want something, they should be here to ask for it, rather than just ignore the whole situation.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I have a tendency to agree with you. I appreciate the comment. Any other public comments on this? All right, since there are no further public comments, I would accept a motion to remove from public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at, ooh, 7:09.
I have a motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, we are now adjourned from public hearing. Madam President, I have a tendency to agree with you. I think that if a person or organization is asking for something from the village, whether it be through the Planning Commission or through the council, they are duty-bound to be here and state their case, as you will, in a public forum. I'm a bit disappointed in that.
I will...
Manager, am I missing something?
Well, I just wanted to say I can make a quick call and see if they're on their way. Because I think I just came over here at 6:00 and talked to the operator. He said he took the paperwork, he's supposed to be here, but...
Well, of course, they...
Maybe go on to the next item, see if he's...
They may have had an emergency. I'll give them the benefit of the doubt at this point. There are no items on the agenda under old business, so we'll move from there on to new business. And at this point, we're going to discuss the outdoor cafe year-round for the Ox Bar and Grill, and this is under new business. This is not part of the public hearing. Chris, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to you and have you express at least your point of view, what this case represents.
So the proposal is from the Ox Bar and Grill, which has an approved outdoor seating area on M-24. The outdoor seating area was approved back in 2014, but their request is under new zoning amendments recently adopted by the village, which allow through special use for a restaurant to have their outdoor dining open in the quote-unquote "off-season," which we define as between November 2 and April 14, if they comply with some additional standards. So because the outdoor seating itself was approved back in 2014, was installed and is there right now, if anyone's gone over and seen it, and I went and checked it out right before the meeting, it is in compliance with all of the general standards for outdoor seating, except one that I'll get to in a second, including that it has permission from the Village Council to operate on public property and permission from MDOT to operate in the M-24 right-of-way. So all of that is sort of already taken care of, with the one exception that I mentioned is that there's supposed to be a sign somewhere in there saying, "No food and drink beyond this point" on the fence area. I did not see that sign. That's a minor thing, but any approval should include that as a condition. Which brings us to the requirements for having outdoor dining through the winter. And having reviewed those, there are two big areas that the Ox Bar, if a representative comes tonight, needs to discuss with you before you issue an approval. Number one is any heaters they're going to install, what the design of those will be, what the aesthetics will be, and they're supposed to have an approval from the fire chief. Now, we have not seen any information about those heaters submitted, so anything... It may be that the commission wants to wait until there's a fire chief review to make a decision on that, or you could just approve it with the condition the fire chief approves the design. That's up to you. Either way, we don't have any information on that yet. Hopefully, if the applicant arrives, they can give us more information, and you can make a decision one way or another. The second is, what are they going to do about snow? The ordinance requires them to designate a snow storage area. It actually does, requires it to be either within the enclosure or on private property. They don't really have a private property option, because their building takes up their entire lot. So they're basically going to have to pull a few tables inside when it snows so they can pile the snow in the corner. But that's my deduction of what's going to have to happen. We have not heard from them what their plan is. They need to present that to you. It needs to meet with your approval before you issue any approval. The final issue I want to bring to your attention tonight is more of a general thing, not any specific standard, but to do with approving a special use, and we want to make sure that special uses don't encumber on what's around them. As you know, when it snows heavily, snowplows come down, M-24, and snow gets piled up on the curb, which isn't really a big deal in terms of blocking the sidewalk, except that the Ox Bar has their seating area that comes out. And I think it should be made clear in any approval that the Ox Bar's responsibility to make sure there are five feet of clear sidewalk in front of their restaurant. Even when the snowplows pile up a whole bunch of snow, it's their responsibility to move that snow out of the way so there's a five, five feet of clear sidewalk, because they're blocking what would otherwise be public sidewalk.
So, Chris, how is this enforced?
How is that snow issue enforced?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we wanted to go, this is a request that's coming from the business...
Yeah.
Businesses in the village. And we have accommodated them by agreeing that year-round is acceptable as long as they meet certain terms. My concern is that I would really prefer this not become a nuisance to the village, and I see that there's potential here. You know, it, you know, this is, this is, this must be an enforceable infraction if they elect not to keep the sidewalks clear, because they're consuming a good portion of it. You know, this is the public right-of-way, and I want to make sure that we're not buying an enormous aggravation...
Okay.
Because they're not living up to their end of the bargain. I'd like to make sure that it's enforceable and that, that we have the authority as a village to go over there and say, you know, "You guys are infraction of this," and either they be cited or fined or whatever the, whatever that may be, to ensure that they're being good neighbors.
Sure. Now, we have, we have two things. We have enforcement on businesses clearing the sidewalk in front of their store that we have in general.
Okay, thank you.
That's one. The other we have is if it's, if it's a condition of their approval from you guys, we could pull their special use, and then they can't have their outdoor seating at all.
Okay, I appreciate that, Ms. Manager.
So that's sort of the hammer, that's...
Okay, I appreciate that.
But it is, it is there, you know? Sorry.
We have a code enforcement officer, and that is his responsibility...
Excellent.
...on all sidewalks.
Of course, I appreciate that. That's what I wanted to know, and I thank you very much. Jack, you have a comment?
Yeah, number one, after reading the review and looking at it, the design of any heaters to be installed is almost necessity to be reviewed by the fire chief, propane storage, that kind of stuff out in the front, out in the public, tip over, those kind of things. Number two, there is no snow storage area in there. We all know what happens. They plow M-24 up into the parking lots or parking spaces in front of M-24, then the DPW comes and digs all that snow out and transports it over to the park and dumps it. So, I mean, you're going to, you're going to be hassled with that all winter long, sitting out there. Number three, there is no sign that says, "No food and drink beyond this point." And number four, a special land use goes on forever, unless stated that it goes as soon as the business owners terminate. Because you have one, for instance, right now, is Burdick Street Supply had a special land use for a non-compliant sign, and when they changed ownerships, they were allowed to keep that sign. So you would want to regulate as to how long that special land use wants to go on.
This is...
I think it would be fair to make it renewable annually, but that would have to be part of the motion.
Part of the motion.
This is the representative of the owner from the Ox Bar. Thanks for coming.
Stand by for just a moment. Do you have a suggestion on how we could handle this?
No, I don't. I'm actually looking for responses now.
I can respond to a couple of items, if you want. Regarding the snow, their particular site does not have parking in front. There are no parking bays. That's done by Conser Real.
Right.
So they're only, they'd have to store it within their area or have it removed off the site.
I guess, does the applicant know that he's going to be shoveling snow over the fence?
That's correct, yes.
Does the applicant know he does not have a sign in front that says, "No food or drink beyond this point"?
He will take care of that. Well, I'll take care of that exactly.
Has the applicant had any...
Let's, Jack, let's, is Mr. Gokas, is that correct? Is that...
Joe Kaino, my name is Santi Bernate, I'm the manager.
Could you, could you please step up to the podium, if you please? And when you, when you, when you reach the podium, would you please state your name for the record, and then also, please state your name.
My name is Santi Bernate.
Okay, Santi, thank you very much.
How do you spell that last name, please?
Yeah, if you'd spell your name.
B-E-R-N-A-T-E.
And please state your relationship to the...
I am the food and beverage manager there.
Okay. Are you, are you, do you have authority to be able to speak for the organization?
Yes, I do.
And in regards to this matter?
Correct, yes.
We had a, we, just to give you a little bit of background, we entered into public hearing just a few minutes after 7:00 to be able to elicit some response from the community. The Madam President from the Village Council spoke very briefly, and because you were not here, we entered, we exited from our public hearing. And so now we're under what we call new business, and we're, we're trying to take testimony from the parties that provide us with information in regards to your request. And, you know, there are, I have to be perfectly honest, there are some concerns that the commission has right now in regards to the state of the request, primarily because, in my mind, there are some deficiencies in the request. There are, there are items that are important to us as commission that are missing and information that's not available yet. So I have to tell you that from my heart, I'm inclined to table this and let you get the rest of your information in place, and then come back to us perhaps at our next meeting with a complete package, because, for instance, first and foremost is public safety. And in order, in order to have this approved, I would have to see, one, approval from the fire chief, that any external heaters that you guys are going to use are approved by the fire chief. That is absolutely important to me, and I would, I would consider that to be a prerequisite, and that information is not available now. So as this application stands, I would not be inclined to approve it. In addition, there's a sign that's missing from the front of the facility that says food and beverage are not to be taken beyond this point. That is also very important. That's not, that's not present yet, and I would make that a stipulation, that it be present before we approve this. And then, you know, certainly those, those two items right there. So, you know, my feeling as chairman of the commission is that I'm, I'm inclined to table this request right now and be happy to hear this next time, if you can gather the rest of the information that we're, that we're asking for. And then, of course, the question of, of snow removal, as I was talking to our planning coordinator here, Chris Corey, dealing, you know, and I'll, I'll say again what I, what I mentioned earlier, is that I'm, we agreed to accept year-round outdoor seating, as long as it doesn't become a burden or nuisance to the community, and I don't want it, I don't want it to become that. And so, you know, snow removal is a big issue. You know, how you deal with snow during the winter is really important, and making sure that thoroughfare is maintained continuously, so that the public is not encumbered by your taking up part of their sidewalk is really what it comes down to. And so, you know, these are questions that we need to have answered and items that we need to have completed before I can really take this on as a, as a, as a complete package. Commissioners, if you have other comments, I'm, you know, I'm willing to go with the, with the consensus of the, of the commission.
Yeah, you, we could, we could, we could approve this, right, Chris? If we approved it with the following conditions being met, inclusion of the sign, inclusion of the fire chief's authority or authorizing the outdoor heating, and a snow storage plan, those three conditions, we could approve that tonight.
You could. It's, it comes down to whether you commissioners want to see that information that you just listed, or whether you want to leave that to the staff and the administration. They are big, important items, though.
Right. It would be my responsibility anyways to make sure that sign will be up, and it'll also be, I am basically responsible for the upkeep of the outside during the winter. I literally do it myself most of the time.
I'm not surprised.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I'm the one who takes care of it. I think we've always done a really good job of keeping the thoroughfare clear.
Good, I appreciate that.
Yes, so, you know, even kind of help...
Because in the past, you've, just as an aside, in the past, you've removed this during the winter, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
And left a full width of the sidewalk available?
That's correct.
And so now, the enclosure that you have right now would remain in place and be used year-round?
Correct.
Okay. Adam, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I think this might be a question for Chris. On item number K, you have a comment. The applicant has submitted a note stating that if any televisions or speakers are installed, they will comply with this requirement. What is the, does, I was reading through the ordinances, how does a television fit into exterior?
They wouldn't have one.
I'm sorry?
They wouldn't have one.
Yeah, we're not...
I just, I just want to make sure, because that was, something was referenced on your application. If a tel, if a television or a speaker must be provided, they will be controlled as to not be audible more than 10 feet. I just...
We have no plans at all to put any type of speakers and/or televisions outside.
Yeah, I've seen them in other places. They can work, but it's a case-by-case thing, and especially when it comes to sound. Most of the time when I've seen them, it's just the video screen, and frankly, it's turned off unless there's a big ballgame on and they've got an overflow crowd outside looking, watching the game.
And, and...
And you guys aren't planning to do anything like that.
No.
Oh, and that, that's, that's fine. I just, there's a difference between behind the restaurant and on the main street, though.
That's true, too, yeah. In that back porch, you could picture it very easily.
Well, 24th Street does it, and they do it quite well. You know, they've got that seating area out in the back that I've been to many times. Jack, you and I have watched game out there. And, and that's, you know, it's nice to be able to sit outside and watch the football game, and I appreciate that, but on, when it's in the front of the building and it's facing the street, you have to be concerned about it, one, being a sign, or, two, being a distraction, perhaps. You know, and unfortunately, we didn't take that into consideration about the idea of even thinking about a television facing main highway.
Yeah, which they're not proposing. That's a good point.
Maybe moved.
You know, and it's the thing where...
The, and the shape of the area doesn't, it's not really conducive to having a television. I mean, it's, it's, you know, the 24th Street in back is a large rectangular area where every, they put the screen right up underneath the eve on the, on the back wall, and everybody can see it, but in this area, it's not really conducive, so I would, you know, I certainly wouldn't spend the money for it, but there you go.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that topic was brought up, just to cover ourselves in the future, potentially.
Sure. Gary, do you have any comments you'd like to...
Hey, Chris, what's the total width of the sidewalk?
In that location, I don't know off the top of my head. It's, it's something like 13, 14 feet, because there are five, this was approved before. There are definitely five feet from the edge of their fence to the curb, or even to nearest...
That's what remains, is five.
There is, there is at least five, and the width of their seating area is eight foot six, so it's at least 13 foot six.
Yeah, when we approved this to begin with, we had to have a 60, 60-inch sidewalk from the fence to the curb, and a 48-inch clear aisle will be maintained from the exit of the building to the seating area. So it was all maintained.
Yeah. The dimensions of that seating area, as it exists right now, are in compliance.
Well, I'm, I'll go along with the, with the wish of the, of the board. I entertain a motion if we want to consider approving this now with these conditions. Do you have a motion for me that you want to try?
Sure, I'll try to make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve, approval of the special land use for the Ox Bar, 23 South Washington Street, outside dining year-round with the following conditions. Number one, fire chief approval of the heaters, both placement and type. Number two, place, placement of the "No food" sign beyond this point on the fence. Number three, snow storage plan acceptable to the administrator, zoning administrator in the village. Number four, the special land use ends, terminates with either the owner transfers, sale of this business. End of motion.
All right, I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
One second.
All right, any discussion?
On number four, is it, it just ends, or it renews annually, or...
Well, a special land use, Chris, is, is, goes with the business unless cited with a term limit.
Exactly, yeah. Runs with the land unless, in the motion to create it, you do something else. So you could make it annually renewable, but what Jack has done is just make it run with this particular business. So if the Ox sells...
Right.
...closes...
Or owner transfers.
Yeah, then, then we lose the, then they lose this approval, have to come back.
Okay.
But they don't have to come back every October to get their approval to stay open in November.
As long as they're compliant to these conditions, they don't have to come back here every year and file a request.
That's correct, yeah.
But if he's got zoning compliance issues, then that would be brought up, and this special land use would be valid. You have a question on the floor?
Madam President, will you please step up to the podium, please?
Can I just ask a question?
When you made that motion, you said the snow storage area, but does that mean the snow storage area within the fence?
I had...
And/or does it include the five-foot sidewalk that has to be cleared from the curb to the fence?
I'll repeat what I said, was the snow storage plan acceptable to the village zoning administrator? Now, if the zoning, the village zoning administrator finds it acceptable to put it in the middle of Centennial Park, I guess that's it, or if they haul it out, he has to have some sort of plan that he's going to comply with, so that the zoning administrator can look at it and say, he's complying to the plan. Now, the plan would be acceptable to the village, is, the village ordinances are, you can't have snow on your sidewalk, you must get it out of here. We also say that you can't eat out in, without 48 inches out of this, you have to have 60 inches remaining in sidewalk. So, you're right, it tells you specifically, you're not just putting the snow over here, and they're pushing it back over here, and you're pushing it back over there, it has to be a plan that you guys all state is working for the village. If you have to shovel it up in a wheelbarrow and haul it around the back, it's got to be 60-inch sidewalk, 48-inch aisle way between the seats, everything stays the same, but that plan has to be acceptable to the village according to their ordinances.
Excuse me, gentlemen, I'm sorry.
Here we go. Is that acceptable?
Any further discussion?
I guess to piggyback off that, I just, I would be hesitant if large amounts of snow were just piled in the fenced-in area as a means to dispose of the five-foot aisle way. I mean, I don't know if it'd be unsightly, or what the, and again, I'd be completely contingent upon what the village deems as acceptable, but that's just a comment. Like you said, shoveling snow over to one side just to make sure the side works on.
Some would be ironed out in a snow mound.
Yes. We wouldn't, from a forceful standpoint, we wouldn't have the snow higher than the fence, so there wouldn't be a vision issue.
Yeah, and it's actually kind of unsightly for us to even have something like that outside the door, because we have tables right there, we would even, even when, we would never allow it to happen. I mean, it just would not even look right for the tables to be covered, or, you know, so we, like I say, I'm the one who usually makes sure that the thoroughfare is the way we want it.
I would agree.
And again, this snow plan, what is meant by this, to be acceptable to the village zoning administrator, is what you guys determine is acceptable is totally up to you. Now, if you want it out of there, fine, if you want it shoveled up behind the fence, that's fine. I don't want to make that requirement now, I want to move this forward. I'd call the vote.
All right. We have a motion on the table, we've had discussion, and we have a second. I would call for the vote, all those in favor of granting...
Roll call.
A roll call, of course. We'll do a roll call, Mr. Manager.
Yes.
Gary D.
Yes.
Gary Douglas.
Aye.
Adam Johnston.
Yes.
All right. Good, so pursuant to those stipulations, once you get all that package together, you should be able to take that and your, our recommendation to the village council for having this completed.
Very good.
I want to make sure it's clear to everybody that because this was a conditional approval and the conditions haven't been met yet, it is now after November 2nd, the outdoor dining cannot be used until we're squared away on this.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you, Chris. All right. Item A is complete for outdoor cafe, so we move on to new item, new business item B, which is a further discussion on, yeah, thank you very much, we appreciate your coming. In regards to item B, which is a further discussion on medical marijuana in the village, last time we spoke, we addressed the fact that the village attorney had sent an email to each one of us asking for our input in regards to our thoughts and feelings, in terms of what direction we would like to go in. All I can at this point ask is that if you have not responded to that message, please do so, so that we can begin to put this on the agenda, because I don't want this to get away from us, and I don't want this to run out of time and we'll be playing catch-up. So I would like to bring this, you know, to the forefront at some point, I'd like to have a full commission here to be able to discuss it as well.
I have a question, Gary.
Yes, sir.
I know this is a discussion, I know that the emails went out, and clearly stated in the email, if you elect to do nothing, that means you will have none of the above. So, seeing as there was, there really, this commission doesn't state what should be done, we only act on what the village council tells us they're going to do, and we need to provide an ordinance to live within that direction, that's my belief. The planning commission doesn't say there will be medical marijuana in the village of Oxford.
Yes, of course not.
Okay, so currently, there is a memorandum that's, has a moratorium on medical marijuana. We have all these laws and things that have passed here in August that are changing this, but yet we have no direction from the village council that states, build us an ordinance to allow dispensaries, build us an ordinance to allow this, or build an ordinance allowed to do that. None of us are elected, we're appointed, the elected officials should be telling us what they need. And I, from a discussion standpoint, I would look at a directive that says, either A, let me read these, what has changed. Okay, planning commissioners, put together an ordinance for Class A through C growers, or number two, processors, or number three, secure transporters, number four, provisioning centers, commonly called dispensaries, number five, safety compliance facilities. We're not, we're not trying to set direction for the village, the people of, the residents of the village, we're to act in forming an ordinance as to what the village council members tell us what they want to do with their village.
So, Chris, we have...
I've wrestled with this.
As a commission, we have been the recipients of a great deal of information that you and other members of your organization and people that you have brought in before us have given us regarding the current state of affairs and current state of thought and the current state of the legality of this issue. Have you provided the same, or someone else provided the same level of information to the village council?
I'm not sure they've had the same level of information, they haven't had the same sorts of presentations that you received, but they have received, for instance, the newsletter from McKenna that went, that was in your packets, they have received, you know, the memos from, that I've put together, the sample ordinances from other communities, that sort of thing. They were also recipients of Mr. Davis's questionnaire, so, you know, I think Jack makes a good point that this direction needs to come from the village council, but they were asked the same questions you were, in terms of their priorities for direction on this issue.
If we're still, on my question, I believe, I'm not a village resident, I'm a township resident who's been supplied to your board as to try to meld our communities, but I, as a planning commissioner, do not set direction. We take direction and help facilitate the ordinances to enact what the village residents would require or like. I mean, I don't want to have the cart steering the horse here, but I want that horse to lead and us to say, we can provide you an ordinance. Number one, if we start doing an ordinance, you're spending money, we're giving you, we're telling you to spend money. I don't think this board or this commission has that authority, number one. Number two, nor to set direction for the community, we are to help the direction setters have the guidelines to follow.
Yep.
So, we've had five or six conversations around medical marijuana, and I don't know truly how the village council feels, because we haven't had that direction.
Madam President, if you'd be kind enough to step up to the podium, I appreciate the fact that you're here. What I'd like, what I'd like to know is, what is our protocol? I believe that Commissioner Curtis is correct, in that we really haven't received official guidance from you and your council as to what is the wish of the council, because Jack's correct, I mean, it's not for us to set policy and for you to approve it, it's for you to tell us what you want, and then it's our job to go out and create the means to achieve that, and then for you guys to be able to approve it. What is my protocol for requesting this from you or the council?
Just let me know, and I'll put it on the agenda.
Do I need to come testify for this, or can it just be something that occurs?
Joe and I are both here listening.
Well, you got to be careful about an open meetings act if we're going to make a decision on what direction we should be going here. I think what you, we want, and...
What you want is to ask council to make a decision whether...
They want us to do anything.
Council wants to have medical marijuana or not, and if we do, planning commission to give direction, write an ordinance, or whatever one we want.
I don't want to paint your house blue and you want it yellow.
Right.
That's what, I guess, this commission is the painters, what color do you want it?
Because, Sue, we're here to serve you, you know, and we'll certainly do whatever the council's will is, but having, having direction so that we're not steering this, I mean, it's not for us to say what it should be, it truly probably should come from you guys as a body, and, you know, that probably means you're going to have to do some public hearings and find out what the will of the, of the public is in regards to this, but this is, you know, I mean, I would say it's coming, but it's already here, you know, the governor signed this into law, and so we're going to have to take some stand, either for or against, and we're here to support you, whatever your council's will is.
Well, my only wish is that this would have all occurred several months ago, so the council could have been having these discussions, rather than keep...
Asking us what we want to do.
Asking us for input, or for input.
Sure.
It should have been discussed, and, you know, now we're at the point of the door being open.
Mm-hmm.
That's my only regret.
Well, just a clarification on the door being open, the law, new law, the state won't start issuing licenses for these until December 2017. So we have a year before anyone comes knocking on the door and says, hey, let me put in my dispensary, but that doesn't mean we can sit around doing nothing. I think, I think making our decision and acting on whatever the direction of the village council is, is the prudent way to go.
So we're not too late?
No, we are not too late.
The clock is ticking.
We are, the clock is ticking, but we have time, but the clock, at this point, the clock is ticking. Two months ago, we were in a holding pattern, now we're moving towards, it's December 17th, 2017, that the state starts issuing licenses. We don't have an ordinance in place, yeah, the law says that means everything's prohibited, but no one's tested that, and that's, so it's kind of up to Mr. Davis as to whether, you know, we should have an ordinance that says, no, we don't want it, so if anyone asks, it's very clear, and it's not a, will you allow greenhouses? I could grow tomatoes, why can't I grow this? I got a state license. So, that's, those are the questions, but I agree that the village council needs to provide a direction, and then we'll execute.
Sure. Mr. Chairman?
What I'm saying is that, you know, like, what's his name, from Lake Gorian? He's been here twice, but he's not...
Matt Donaskis?
Yeah.
I wish that their process would have been reversed, instead of you guys, we waiting on you to provide us direction, the council should have been...
If I may, this came to me today, as I was thinking how stupid I am to be working on this for the 10th time and not having direction from the village council.
Correct.
All right, we can fix that. We can fix that. Madam President, would you like me to request this officially via writing, or is discussion here satisfactory?
Mr. Chairman, much of the discussion previously, though, was if we were to allow such uses or licenses, in what zoning district would we want to consider them? That was the bigger question, too, I mean, as big, because, for example, it was suggested that we could identify these, or any, or all, or none, to be in the industrial zoning classification, so it doesn't impact on downtown and family atmosphere, those kind of things. So, one of the issues was, if you were to permit it, where would you, what zoning district?
Well, we've done some, we've done, we've done some very good information gathering up to this point, and I think it's now time to request from the council a direction, and once we get that, we'll... We'll tear it up. Gary, you had a comment?
No, I just think that's the correct version.
Madam President.
I don't know if anybody has an answer tonight, but is this, Chris, something that you could, we could have a joint meeting and discuss?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, that's, that's a good point, Sue, because, for one example, the city of Warren, they've had five fires in areas where they've had marijuana, medical marijuana grows, you know, even, even in today's paper, counties missing grants for medical marijuana enforcement, we need direction, and everybody's direction is to, where do you want this stuff, if you want it at all?
I've made the suggestion before to have a joint meeting where, where the villages, the village comes in with no agenda, and just, here's the public on this issue. To have the planning commission and village council there, I think that might be effective as a way to start getting a direction and hear from the public.
Okay, I'm good with that. Sir, you had a comment, you want to step up to the podium, please, if you don't mind? We don't have a motion on the table, so it's, I'm happy to hear your question.
Hi, I'm Dave Bailey, and I live in the village, and I'm speaking as a resident of the village, not as a member of village council.
Good, thank you, David.
I've been elected to the position, we've executed the swearing-in documents, but I have not been seated, so I, and even if I had been, I would still be speaking to you as a, as a resident. And I want to take the long, long view, and we just heard from Chris, that, hey, this is at least a year we're talking, I'm talking 350 years. We're not going to get this right the first try, and the reason why I say that is because we've been trying to get alcohol right for 350 years, approximately, that would be 1666, there were already liquor laws in the colonies, so don't feel bad if you don't get it right the first time. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, I appreciate it, David, thank you. All right, so then, we will, we will table any further discussion about medical marijuana until we have a request for action that comes from the village council, and, Madam Chairman, again, if you want to set up a joint meeting between the commission and the council, we'd be happy to attend that. You bet, and thank you for your support, I surely appreciate it. All right, I have a new business item called meeting schedule for 2017. Village manager, I'm not exactly sure what that means.
This is a schedule, annual schedule, it's required under the Open Meetings Act, that you publish your regularly scheduled meetings for them to come in here. They can be changed or modified, but this is just saying, here's what we expect to meet.
Oh, I see, so that's what you've submitted here.
And only if we have business items will we meet on those days.
I see, okay, I appreciate that, so then...
The formality, meet the state law requirement.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you very much. And so I have here a document that states our meeting schedule for 2017, which is two meetings per month, as you mentioned, with two only scheduled if there are a meeting to conduct, or business to conduct, and so I would entertain a motion that this schedule be filed and approved.
Yeah, I was just looking, I forgot to look at the dates on the calendar, the 21st is the week of Thanksgiving. Is there a problem with that? Because normally, a lot of people take off that week, or, I mean, do you want it on the schedule and cancel it? I didn't...
Cancel it and not have a meeting anyway, so this is just...
Sure. Like you say, you're required by law to publish your, your calendar.
I'm just making sure none of them fell on Memorial Day or Labor Day.
July 5th, I think, is Wednesday, if I remember.
September 5th is the day after Labor Day, first day of school, usually.
Yeah. We would try not to have meetings on holiday weeks.
Yep, you can cancel them as...
May 12th and 16th? So, May 12th is presumably not a Tuesday?
This would be 26, 12 and 26, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Good catch.
May 12th is supposed to be Tuesday?
Oh, that's wrong, too, you're right.
Is there a May, a May election?
It's supposed to be the first Tuesday.
May 8th. It is, it's supposed to be the 2nd and 16th.
May 8th is a Monday, May 9th is a Tuesday.
It'll be the 2nd, May 2nd and the 16th, sorry.
So it'll be May 2nd?
And the 16th.
Sorry.
See why I wanted to check the calendar?
And was there, why is the asterisk on July 12? Is that a Wednesday?
It is.
4th is on a Tuesday?
Yes.
So you would think there would be 14 days between these two dates, is that correct?
Correct.
In April, we're missing that somehow. There's 12 days between 4 and 16.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Should be 18?
It would be the 4th and the 18th.
4th and 18th. For July?
For April.
For April.
It's the first...
The 18th for April?
Yes, 18th.
Apologize for mistakes.
I understand.
See, the only thing I didn't get to look into, and I found six mistakes.
It happens. So what's the commission's pleasure? Do we want to make a motion to accept this, or do we have to do this tonight, Joe?
As amended.
Or can we accept it as amended? Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the Village of Oxford Planning Commission 2017 schedule of meeting as presented and amended tonight.
To have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Adam, a second? All right. Adam, a second. All right. The motion is we accept the schedule of meetings as presented as, and as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. Schedule's accepted, and we thank you very much for that. All right. Item D, it was added to our agenda for this evening. It's, we have a candidate for our vacancy. Rose Bama has come forward and said that she'd like to serve on the commission. Rose, you're in attendance tonight, I believe. If you'd be kind enough to step up to the podium, we'll commence with some interviewing. And commission, I make this an open forum. Your please, fire off your questions if you see fit. Just light into her.
I have a problem with her last name.
Rose, if you'd be kind enough, give us a little bit of your background, and let the commission know exactly who you are and what you're doing.
I moved to the village in 1975. I started working for the village in 75. I retired in 2005 and came back periodically to give a hand when needed. I sat on the village planning commission before I started working one of the few times that I did. And then I resigned because I was working and I couldn't be on both. And then I ran for village council, and I sit on the zoning board of appeals right now.
So you bring a great deal of experience as a commissioner, is that correct?
I would think so.
Good. You've done it before. Good. I thank you very much. Other questions, commissioners?
I have none.
None.
Why do you want to be on the commission, Rose?
I want to stay involved in the community.
I appreciate that, and I celebrate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good. All right. Any other further questions? Adam? Gary?
No, sir.
Jack, my friend Jack?
No.
All right. I would then entertain a motion for the recommendation... I'm sorry.
I have comments.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, David, I wasn't looking. Please, step forward.
I'd be very, very brief.
That's fine.
I'm Dave Bailey. I've been looking forward to serving on this body for years and years, number one. Number two, Rose arrived in Oxford 16 years before I did. I'm supporting her candidacy, not my own, for obvious reasons. 16 years. I came here in 91.
Good. I appreciate that endorsement. Thank you very much. Madam President, please step forward.
I would just like to say that Rose has been a very valuable member of the ZBA. Very, capital, bold. I would hate to lose her off that. So, I don't know whether I'm endorsing her.
Well, I have, I have to say, Madam President, it sounds like an endorsement. It sounds like an endorsement.
She's been a very valuable...
I appreciate that a lot.
I would hate to lose her.
I have a question for you, Sue. Do you have an appointee from the planning commission on the zoning board of appeals right now?
I believe it's Gary.
It is.
Oh, man. Okay. She can still serve, though.
Mm-hmm. All right, then, with no further questions, and after those ringing endorsements, I would entertain a motion for a recommendation for Rose Bama to be appointed to the Village of Oxford Planning Commission. That recommendation would then go before the village council, where it would be approved at one of the upcoming village council meetings. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the village council of Oxford that Rose Bama would be appointed to the planning commission of the Village of Oxford.
Do I have a second for that motion?
One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of Rose Bama's recommendation to become a member of the Oxford Village Planning Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say nay. Good, that motion carries. Rose? We'll forward that recommendation to the village council. You'll be hearing from them for a follow-up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your, for your willingness to come forward. All right. New business is now completed. We move on to item 11, which is public comment. These are for agenda and non-agenda items. If there are any public comment, I'm more than happy to hear it now. Okay, that's fine. Consultant comments? Chris, the floor is all yours.
Briefly. The, as mentioned, the Economic Development Subcommittee will be meeting on Thursday. They will be discussing zoning amendments, and when they are ready to bring those forward to you, you will see them. As I mentioned, there are, it's likely to be a large number of very small amendments. So, I, when you get them, I encourage you to look at them closely, because there won't be time during the meeting to hit every single one. The other thing is, and this is actually more of a message for Mr. Young, I have a large-scale plotted and mounted and nicely printed zoning map in my car to bring in, so it can be hung in the village offices. So, I'll see you after the meeting about that.
Good.
That's it for me.
All right, good. Thank you very much, Chris. Now, moving on to item 13, commissioner comments. Jack, the floor is yours, if you have anything you'd like to say.
Well, I kind of just hit it on with Joe, but I caught it after the cement was dry. The village sidewalks that you replaced along Berdick Street are the ones that the corners, they put nice ramps in, but they didn't put the ADA bubbles in. I just glanced at the ones that were replaced, and I don't know what your ordinance is, but I think the ADA Compliance Act states you must have bubbles and bumps, pads at all entrances to intersection, and I don't think your contractor put them in.
They're still some recessed.
That's my only comment.
I have none.
Adam?
No.
Okay. And the chairman has no comments to add to this, so I'll turn it over to then the Oxford Township Planning Commission update, presented by Jack Curtis.
Last meeting we held, we had a special land use review and approved a propane filling station at the Storm Lock on North Berdick. And we also have approved with conditions the legacy final site plan, the legacy center on M24's final site plan.
Good.
So, other than that, we have a lot of activity. Tractor Supply is going to be open. They're shooting for December 15th, with a grand opening February 1st.
Fantastic.
They put up roof trusses on some of the Abbey Ridge apartments. They've tapped the 16-inch water main going up to the tower yesterday. That's complete, and there are eight building foundations down and moving forward with the apartment units. And that's about all that's going on right now.
Good, thank you very much, Jack. All right. With Oxford Township Planning Commission update completed, we can now move towards adjournment. If I have a motion, we would entertain that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn at 8:00 p.m. Do I have a second?
Second.